Seven hundred steps.
Eighty-five hundred.
I'm meeting at four and that's the first time I left the building or left the office.
I feel like we try to find a time where these two of us. And then there's like this three-way hallway. You off-dream.
Yes. It's like a beauty.
We can do it.
Call the meeting to order, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 27th and April 5th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Viv? May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Deanne, good news report.
Good evening, between now and the end of the month, a number of innovative projects designed by our Sioux Falls School District teachers will get the funding they need to be implemented in our classrooms. The Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation makes grants available thanks to the sponsorship of businesses and individuals in our community. And this evening retired Sioux Falls School District Principal Nancy Duncan is not actually retired, she serves and does a lot of work on our foundation board and she leads the grant committee and she is joining us this evening with details, can't divulge just yet, who's receiving the grants, but we can share some information with you.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here on behalf of the Sioux Falls Public School Education Foundation. It's a wonderful committee that provides funds to support and to enrich the educational opportunities of our students and also our teachers in the Sioux Falls Public Schools. We have two main missions, we do the cash for classrooms, which we provide money to brand-new teachers to help them get started. And then we have the innovative funds grants that we've been giving since 2008. Originally, we were able to give about fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars a year and this year we're going to be giving forty thousand dollars to teachers at twenty-one grant recipients. We had a total of thirty-three grants that were submitted and after reviewing those with a team, it's an independent, we review them all independently and then we meet to invite those who ask for monies above three thousand dollars to come and do some presentations to us and then we make our final decision. We're going to be starting to give grants out tomorrow for the next three weeks and we will be meeting in those schools and having them purchase them so that they can implement them into next year and then give us a summary of what they're doing. You'll get to see a preview of those grant winners because they'll be at the breakfast on August 17th. That's the foundation breakfast, which is one of our main fundraisers and they'll be presenting. I think you'll see some interesting things. Since 2008, we have given three hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-three cents in innovative grants. And so, these applications that we received this year range in, from innovative technology to enhance classrooms, to guided reading books, to meet specific needs within classrooms, for example, certain populations, for example, Native Americans or children who have social and emotional needs and they need more materials to support that through bibliotherapy. And breakout kits where students solve problems in order to break out of their kit, along with so many other. And I would love to tell you who they are, but I don't want to spoil the surprise. And so, come to the breakfast and maybe Deanne can bring back some of the award winners next fall and you can hear from them firsthand what they're doing in their classrooms. Questions?
I know you spent a lot of time being the chair for the grants and doing all the presentations and reading through all of them, so thank you very much. We appreciate your expertise and your experience as a principal, kind of having that inside vision for what maybe some of these people are thinking about for their classroom. So thank you for the time and the volunteer hours that you've put in for the last probably six to eight weeks for sure as you're reviewing those applications and meeting with them. So we appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. It's a great job to have. Thank you.
Nancy, I would echo that too. Thanks so much for all you do in your many capacities yet to help out the district, but specifically for what you do in the foundation. And also, if you would pass my great appreciation back to the foundation because you just seem to be growing in possibilities and just in my twenty-two months here, I really appreciate what I've seen and I love the direction you're headed, so.
Well, and you know, when you see the passion of the, when you read these grants, you see the passion of these teachers and it just fuels our desire to look for more opportunities to get additional funding and be able to do even more. We had requests for a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, we're only able to fund forty thousand, so you see there's still a significant gap. But we changed things a year ago by allowing people to ask up to ten thousand, which means that, you know, we need more funding and need more support. So we want to get the word out there and have people learn about the great works that the foundation is doing, really to support teachers who are doing amazing things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Moving on. May I please have an approval of the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. May I have a motion to approve the supplemental consent agenda nine A, claims to Sanford?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes with an abstention from Board Member Ryder. Need a approval or a motion for approval of the consent agenda supplemental nine B, claims to Avera.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes with an abstention by more Board Member Kate Parker. Now on to the reports of the superintendent.
Okay, our first report tonight is an early childhood report that will come to us from Val Peters. I think many times people think that we're a kindergarten through twelfth-grade organization and the fact of the matter is, our reach goes well beyond that and here to talk about some of that is Val.
Good evening. I have the opportunity tonight to visit with you a little bit about just a few updates in early childhood and those would include the revised performance standards for Head Start and what those are, are the performance standards that we need to kind of pay attention to closely in the next couple of years. An update on where our waiting list is at currently for Head Start and then an update on our Ready to Start program that will be happening this summer, so. The performance standards are, along with the Head Start Act, the base on which Head Start programs develop their programs and ensure compliance and comprehensive, high-quality services for children. These performance standards, just a little history for you, were first published in 1970. They were then revised in 1998 and now we are looking at the newest revision that was finalized in November of 2016. So, in review of those newest revisions, we're happy to report that we have most in place and we won't have to change a lot of procedures to ensure compliance and keep up the comprehensive programming that we have for children. There are however, four performance standards that will take a little bit more study on our part to ensure that we're compliant with them. And you'll see there the four that right now we are really focusing on. The first two have to do with the number of hours children receive programming in our Head Start program and these two performance standards are on the duration of programming, which the Head Start Federal Office is looking at full day extended year or a longer duration of services. So when you look at the first one, fifty percent of our enrollment would be in those full-day extended-year services by August 1st of 2019. And then by August 1st, 2021, we would have a hundred percent of our enrollment in full-day extended-year programming. We also want to keep paying attention to our background checks. The change in that one is that our employees that are paid at all or consult with our Head Start program would have a criminal background check, state and federal or FBI, every five years. So, the district does one as people are hired, we would have to continue, excuse me, continue to track and do those every five years for our staff. And the final one is that we have some additional qualifications for staff that are coaching our teachers as well as the process that we go through for coaching teachers and helping them become the quality teachers that we want to see. Again, the most significant changes in those performance standards that we're watching are with that duration. So, currently, our program serves children in a dual session, four hundred and forty-eight days for a hundred and twenty-eight days a year. The extended day extended year would require that we provide one thousand twenty hours of service, which would be a full-day program four days a week through the month of June, so quite a bit more service, five hundred and seventy-two more hours. Again, you saw the timelines for those performance standards for both fifty percent of our enrollment and for a hundred percent of our enrollment. Currently, there is no additional funding to support that performance standard. So, we applied for a duration grant so that we could do some research and look at how that might apply to us and we did receive a duration grant so that we could provide full-day extended-year programming for seventeen of our four hundred and fourteen Head Start enrolled children. So that will start next school year, so August, September, for the seventeen, eighteen school year, we will have seventeen children in a full-day, full-year program. During that time, we will, we will complete some data, we'll look at the progress of those students to ensure that it is an efficient program in which children can make more progress or determine that they don't. And we will also at that same time monitor any funding options that come about for that performance standard or changes that the Federal Office might make to that performance standard. They have told us, I just learned this last week, that January, February of 2018, they will let us know of any potential changes for that performance standard that would go into effect in August of 2019. So we'll be listening and watching for any new information. As of March, the end of March of this year, our Head Start waiting list still had two hundred and twenty-five children on that waiting list. One of the options that the Federal Office of Head Start is providing to programs to meet that fifty percent and a hundred percent of full-day, full-year programming is that they can decrease the number of children enrolled in their programs. That's a concern for us because of that number that we still have on our waiting list. We don't want to decrease the number of children that we serve. So we're certainly hoping that if they keep that performance standard, that they provide some funding to go with it. Of those two hundred and twenty-five children that are still on our waiting list, there are approximately seventy-four and five-year-olds that will transition to kindergarten next year not having had an opportunity to participate in a preschool program. And we're fortunate that the Sioux Empire United Way provides continued funding for our Ready to Start program, four or five weeks in the summer programming for those children. So, there are five communities that participate in Ready to Start, we are one of them. We've received that funding since the summer of 2012. We've received funding in the past summers for four classrooms of fifteen children each and this summer we have funding for six classrooms, so we will be able to serve ninety children this summer in our Ready to Start program. The children that are eligible for that program are children who have been on our Head Start and Title waiting list and have not had an opportunity for private or public preschool. So we start with those children for enrollment. We have twenty-one essential skills that we focus on in Ready to Start. Those include skills in the areas of English Language Arts, Math, and Supportive Learning Behaviors. We do pre- and post-assessment for all of the children that are participating, so we can see where they came in and where they leave after the five weeks. And then we continue to track those students who participated during their first year of kindergarten. We track them at the end of the first quarter and again at the end of the second quarter of their kindergarten year. The results for last summer were consistent with all of our previous summers, with a hundred percent of our children making gains during that summer program and keeping those gains up and maintaining them throughout that first semester of their kindergarten year. So, in summary, we'll continue to develop systems to ensure that we're compliant and we can provide a high-quality comprehensive program for all of our children that are in our early childhood program. We'll continue to monitor those performance standards on duration and any potential funding or changes that come with those. We know we have a, we continue to have a high number of children on our waiting list for early childhood and we want to serve as many children as we can. And the Sioux Empire United Way continues to provide funding for our summer Ready to Start program to support those children that have been on the waiting list and did not have an opportunity, but still give them some programming before they move into kindergarten. So I would ask that the Board acknowledge the early childhood updates. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Val?
Not any questions specifically, but concerns. I mean, it concerns me that if we didn't get any more money and we had to double the instruction time or whatever you want to call it, that I could potentially have two hundred more kids on the waiting list.
It would.
That's a concern. I guess I don't know, something we should probably talk about as a Board at some point, is it something I need to be addressing with my congressman that, you know, it's great to, to move the bar up, but it's got to come with funding or as a community, we will lose ground and we're already, we're already not meeting all the needs of the.
There are a lot of Head Start programs across the country who are not necessarily having a waiting list such as we are. So, that decrease in funding is an option for them to look at. It is not an option for us, we've expressed that to our regional office, that it concerns us as well. So when we have our seventeen kids in our duration program, we'll be taking data, we'll be monitoring their progress to ensure that it, it is a program in which they can make more gains than in a half-day program. So we have the data to support whatever decision our district might move towards should there not be funding for that mandate and still have to look at it.
Yeah, like I said, I just, it may be that we need to take a different tact at how to, you know, communicate that this does impact us. I mean, talking to the Head Start people that are driving this is one thing because it's like, you know, I'm not sure that does a lot of good, so we'll just have to figure out how we communicate the potential impact to our district with our, whether it's the Congress people or the government, you know, I don't know who, we'd have to strategize that, but obviously a concern. And I guess the other thing is just, thank you, I know it's trying to navigate all these programs, whether it's Head Start money, Title money, Grant money, United Way money, you know, we're, we're, you know, a, a school district in of ourselves when we're sending a thousand kids to some, getting them some type of pre-K and experience. And I know it's a logistical nightmare as you've been more than patient with me over the years trying to explain it and, and figure out how we can get more kids in it and I appreciate all your knowledge and expertise and ensuring that we can get every last kid that we can into an experience before they hit kindergarten because it's so vitally important and, and will pay dividends to us down the road all the way to our graduation rate if they don't get that, that good start. So, thank you for your, to you and your team for your tireless efforts and, and trying to get all those kiddos into, into pre-K.
You're welcome. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to acknowledge the early childhood updates?
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Our next report is a special education update report and this is to just bring you up to speed on the various populations we have within our special education program. As you know, our special education program is a complex program that is larger than all but I think five or six other districts in the state of South Dakota and here to talk to us tonight is Deb Mullenberg-Wilson.
Good evening. Tonight's report is to give you an update on the unduplicated number of students with disabilities that were reported to the state in December and also to update you on our performance in the State Performance Plan. So first to the count, on December 1 of 2016, the district reported three thousand nine hundred and twenty-four students with disabilities eligible for special education from birth through age twenty-one. That was an increase of two hundred and three students from December 1 of 2015. And just for your level of understanding, that increase takes our proportion of students with disabilities in K-12 to fifteen point one percent, which is less than a one percent increase from the year before. Finally, the federal and state law prescribes what disabilities students may have in these areas and our district represented all of the disabling conditions except deaf-blindness. So, we're rich with diversity within our population. To give you a visual diagram of what that looks like, the state defines the levels of disability as a level-one disability, which are those considered mild and represent developmental delays, health impairments, specific learning disabilities, and speech and language disabilities. The level two through six disabilities represent lower incident disabilities with more significant needs. If you were a parent of a child with disabilities in either level one or two through six, it would all feel significant to you, so I use caution when I use those descriptors. In this diagram, I've tried to illustrate for you what that growth looks like for Sioux Falls. So if you look at the blue line, that looks at those level two through six disabilities, you'll see over the last few years, gradually that continues to increase. The pink line looks at those level-one disabilities as defined by the state. And you'll see that's much more steady and you don't see that same growth. And then the yellow line, of course, is them rolled together coming to our three thousand, nearly four thousand students. So, accountability for those students is important and the Sioux Falls School District has a history of taking the job of special education very seriously and we still do. In the 2004 reauthorization of the law, each state was directed to develop a system for accountability that the states would report to the federal government. So whenever those kinds of mandates come, then schools get more levels of accountability. In South Dakota, we call that the State Performance Plan. There are fourteen indicators that have measurable targets, which we continue to evaluate and monitor our growth. Some of the indicators are a combination of compliance-related targets and student-related performance targets. I will tell you that in the preliminary fifteen, sixteen data that I've shared in the report and I'll talk through it in a little bit, the Sioux Falls School District meets all the compliance timelines and we have opportunities to grow when it comes to our students with disabilities' performance targets. Annually, the state collects all the data and then calculates a performance level or determination of the district. Since the onset of the State Performance Plan, the Sioux Falls School District has always been rated as meets the requirements on a four-point scale with one end of the scale being needing substantial intervention through meets the requirements. So, let's talk a little bit about some of that preliminary data. I first of all want to start by saying, for the district to have met all those compliance targets, we should celebrate and applaud special education teachers because that's a huge chore and it reflects their hard work. There, there's also data in this report that tells us we should applaud the accomplishments of students with disabilities and their continued improvement. The other point as we disaggregated the data this year was it was important to look at how it aligned to our Sioux Falls School District Strategic Plan. That plan is for all students, including those with disabilities. And as we go through the areas where we have an opportunity to grow, you'll see a very direct alignment to our strategic plan. So we'll start with graduation and drop-off. Drop-out, face, my voice is dropping off. So, I've shared here the state's targets, what they'd like districts to do, their rates, and then you can see where the Sioux Falls School District rates. Both of these are areas that we can be better and we need to be better. There's one important calculation factor that you as a Board need to remember and that is, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires school districts to serve some students whose disability necessitates until June 30 of their twenty-first year. So, just for your information, I don't want it to be interpreted as an excuse, I calculated what our graduation rate for students with disabilities would be if meeting that piece of the law wasn't a part of our calculation. And that would be sixty-five point two-five percent. Surely leaves us room for improvement, but I think it also gives you some information about the impact of that. As you all have been apprised of many times, our graduation rates are an important part of our strategic plan.
Deb, do you mind if I jump in on that?
Please.
I think that's a critical piece to remember, is the piece that Deb just went over and it's not excuse-making, it's just real. The students that we have who don't get to graduate with their cohort should be with us.
Yes.
This isn't, this isn't a, a problem, they should be with us, there's no question about that. What shouldn't happen is they shouldn't count against the graduation rate, but the fact of the matter is, they do, so that's just important to note.
Participation and proficiency rates, this is the same marker as you would see on students who do not have disabilities in the administration and of the smarter balanced assessment in grades three through eight and eleven. So, our participation rates are both within one percent of the state's target and our proficiency rates, both in reading and math, have room for improvement. I did go back in preparing this report and looked at our district performance of youth with disabilities since they last changed the test and compared results. And those would illustrate that each year, students with disabilities have grown in reading and math, but obviously, we can grow more and will continue to work toward that. These actions are all included in the student outcomes portion of the strategic plan. Within the IDEA, there's significant language about always serving students in the least restrictive environment. And that's important for IEP teams to always think about as they make decisions at each child's IEP meeting on how much time, for being a general ed setting or pulled into smaller group settings. So you can see there is one component of this that we meet, there are two that we're getting close to meeting, but we can continue to strive to be better in. getting close to meeting, but we can continue to strive to be better in. Our district has always and will continue to promote inclusive practices of students with disabilities. In our schools today, you'll see many more special education teachers delivering their service within general education settings, but to meet the state targets, we'll continue to work toward improving that while still honoring the decisions of each student's IEP team in designing their needs. Our preschool children are also important, as Val illustrated earlier. This targets just children with disabilities in preschool, and they look at three broad categories: social-emotional skills, acquisition and use of knowledge, and appropriate behaviors, all of which tie very directly to our strategic plan. They look at each of those skill sets and the percent of students who made substantial growth within each one, as well as if they exited the early childhood program within age expectations. You can see the hard work that's gone in for students, celebrating their accomplishments as well as staff in making that level of gains, but you can also see we have ways that we can continue to improve, and they directly relate to everything that we do each day in our childhood and through our strategic plan. Finally, the state completes phone interviews of students with disabilities one year after they've completed their special education program in each South Dakota district. There are two categories where we meet the state's targets here: our percent of youth with disabilities competitively employed one year after they've left us, and youth enrolled in post-secondary education training other than higher ed. So a program like Southeast Tech, those kinds of programs, we meet the target. The one area that we can continue to strive to be better here would be in our youth with disabilities attending higher ed institutions. To help students with disabilities and their parents, what we're doing is talking more about that at the IEP team level, helping people to know what's available to them at higher ed, and making some connections for parents and youth to begin talking to higher ed about what supports they have for students with disabilities. Finally, be it said again, that this district is boiling committed to continued growth and improvement for students with disabilities, and we need to continue to work to always be the best we can be on behalf of our students. When you think about the beginning of my presentation, and I talked a little bit about our population of students and who makes that up, and then you think about the rigor of some of these targets, I think it well illustrates that the severity of our student population will continue to require us to really study the relationship between our performance and that. Surely, the performance plan doesn't sort out students and their needs when working toward that, but the severity of our population needs to be prevalent in our mind as we plan and think about those targets. Finally, I'll say again, the strategic plan addresses the needs of all Sioux Falls School District students, including those with disabilities, and the performance plan results directly relate to each of those performance areas of our plan, so we'll continue to work in collaboration with that plan. I'd stand by for any questions that you have.
Good report, Deb. Have you seen any trends you think the board should be aware of, or I know we look at kind of macro-level numbers, but anything within there that you're seeing?
Yep. I could tell you, when you look at our student population and trends that we see within it, we have seen over the last five years, every year, continued growth in our infants and toddlers, and the infants and toddlers that we serve are those with those severe disabilities. So that gives us some idea of what's coming to us. Students with cognitive disabilities is another area, but each year, we see continued growth. If you looked at and disaggregated the numbers like the special ed leadership team has, you would see our number of students with autism grew during that time, but I would exercise caution to you that the state changed their criteria and made that wider during that five-year period. So I think that's an important consideration. The other group of students that we see some fluctuation up and down during that five-year period, but right now, we're up, would be students that have emotional disabilities. So I don't think any of that is really new to all of you who are in our schools and are communicating with school leaders. We know that about our population, and we believe that makes us a richer environment for students. But I would say those are the areas that you would see the biggest trends.
We see people open-enrolling into the Sioux Falls School District with children with disabilities because of the services that we are able to provide.
I don't know if I would tie that to open enrollment, board member writer in our policy, and in the law, there are some stipulations about students with disabilities, so those families have the same right to apply, but IEP teams look at that information and make some determinations. I would have to be honest with you and say that if the special ed supervisors were standing here, they would tell you that we have a lot of children who move to Sioux Falls.
Sure.
And part of it is the level of service our district offers, but part of it is the support that our community offers to families and children with disabilities. So our outstanding medical services, other support services in our community are supportive, and so we see a large number of students moving in.
Thank you.
It's a good question.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I just look back, and I think back to 2007, when I was, first went on the board, we had about 3,000 kids in the school district that were part of our special ed program, and they made up, I think at that time, about 13 percent of the district's population, and, you know, over 10 years, which is, for some of us, a short time, some maybe a longer time, but to see that number grow by 1,000 and to now be a little over 15 percent of our population, we are attracting a lot of those kids, and you've all heard me say this before, I think it does give a richer view of the world of all of the kids in the district, but these are the kids that would oftentimes fall through the cracks if it weren't for school districts like Sioux Falls Public Schools and Avira and Sanford and all of the other programs that are available in Sioux Falls were a place that attracts folks that need those services, and I just can't tell you how proud I am of the work that our district does on behalf of every one of those kids. Anytime we see numbers that we may not be hitting a target compared to other communities, those communities don't have the same number of kids and the kids with the severity of challenges that a lot of our kids have. So I think we're doing good work, you're doing good work, and your staff is, thank you.
Yeah, that credit needs to go to a whole group of staff out in schools every day, and to principals who are leading and advocating for kids at their schools.
Yeah, I would just say, the thing that's probably troubling to me is that our number of students continues to grow, but I think our number of available teachers to provide the services to those students becomes harder and harder to find and to fill, and so, you know, I think we have to be creative at how can we find the best people to work with these students who really need, I mean, all of our students need great teachers, but these are a little bit more vulnerable population, and so how can we make sure that we continue to find those staff members that can offer them support, make them, and help them be successful during the time that they're with us in our schools? So I think that's an ongoing challenge that we have to with our population.
Yeah, I would applaud the Human Resource Department for all they've done for that effort, and our leadership team has worked hard to make more connections with higher ed, to have more opportunities for future teachers to be in our schools, learning, so we continue to work on all those pieces. But you are right, the area of finding certified special ed teachers is and will continue to be a challenge across our country, not just in Sioux Falls.
Thanks. Good report and good board comments. May I please have a motion to acknowledge the special education population report?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
We're ready for information on the FY18 proposed budget. We have with us Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Finance, Todd Veek.
Thank you, Dr. Mahler. This will be our tenet of adoption, and it is also a public hearing. I'll go through some information. I know Board Member Morrison has some information to add, and we'll have to conduct the public hearing. So as you know, the school board began its budget process in November 2016, which time you, the board, adopted guidelines and a timeline for the budget process. Between December and February, 19 subcommittees comprised of administration, professional, and classified staff, and community individuals developed program budgets, which were then presented to the Budget Review Committee. The Budget Review Committee included two board members, members Morrison and Alberti, and representation from the subcommittees. The Budget Review Committee met in March to review the committee recommendations, and as you know, last Wednesday, April 5, a board work session was held where we went through the work of the Review Committee and the budget subcommittees. So what we're looking at is a revenue increase of $6.1 million from last year in the general fund, and an expense increase of $8.3 million in the general fund. We are proposing to spend $5.1 million into the fund balance. The budget presented to the board has been heavily influenced by negotiations with the teachers to substantially reduce the retirement incentive and convert those dollars to salary. This is in line with the bills passed last year by the legislature to improve teachers' salaries. Specifically, new state aid dollars were used primarily to improve the salaries of teachers making below the district average, and pension fund dollars were used to increase teacher salaries with several years of district experience. The pension fund was eliminated by last year's legislation, and those dollars were also rolled into the general fund state aid formula. The FY18 five-year plan... Let me get this down here quick. See that okay? It's on this area right here, the fund balance. The FY18 five-year plan spends into the fund balance by $5.1 million next year. This figure is higher than projected last year due to a state aid increase of only 0.3 percent, which is approximately 400,000. The recommendation projects growth in the fund balance in FY22 and finishes that year with a 7 percent fund balance. The lowest the fund balance is projected to be in this new five-year plan is $6.8 million or 3.9 percent. That is below what was recommended by the Finance Action Network, a fund balance of 8.5 percent, but we have to fund the district, and we don't go to zero, and we don't want salaries to go backwards. Revenue highlights in the general fund. So that would be Exhibit 3. I'm going to try to put most of this on the screen. And those are available on the web, and they're in your packets as well. Revenue highlights, $1.8 million in new state aid formula funds due to increased enrollment and increased ELL enrollment. $0.4 million or 400,000 in additional state aid due to the 0.3 percent increase. $1.4 million increase in projected bank franchise revenues. $1.5 million in additional federal funds. $1.3 million of the second half, the increase in the opt-out back to 7.5 million. We had reduced that prior to that due to a 40, but increased it back up because we reduced capital outlay 40 cents, and the pension fund levies disappeared also. That was all in 2016. And then we get a $4.5 million increase in state aid dollars in the form of property tax relief, which offsets $3 million in property taxes, and $1.5 million reduction in transfer from the pension fund, which was completely eliminated beginning in FY18, but counted as a local effort in FY17. So the net gain on that is $0, just 4 points, state aid goes up 4.5 million, but property taxes dropped by the same amount. And a reduction in other fund, general fund revenue sources of $300,000. On the expenditure side, some highlights are a $2.8 million increase in salaries, including a 1.4 percent increase for non-teacher groups, and the second and final year phase into the shift from a retirement incentive to increased salary for experienced teachers. $1.25 million increase in health insurance, that's 4.5 percent, and other benefit increases. $1.2 million increase in elementary, middle school, and high school instruction salaries due to increased students. Increase of $529,000 of federal funds in Title II Part A to support bringing Code to the Future into three Title I elementary schools. A $2.5 million increase in curriculum services to fund the implementation of the English Language Arts Curriculum, which is actually 100,000 dollars below the projected amount. And a $45,000 increase in transportation services, which includes $40,000 to add a bus route for John Harris students living east of Sycamore Avenue and south of 53rd Street. The district's five-year capital outlay plan, those are Exhibits 7 and 8. The district's five-year capital plan closes out the books on the currently scheduled CIP projects, as a new version of the CIP will be prepared throughout FY18. Previously identified but unscheduled projects will be prioritized for future spending commencing in FY19 or FY20 as funding permits. The plan also calls for spending $4.3 million in FY18 in technology, primarily focusing on the One-to-One Chrome Book Initiative. The technologies plan will spend nearly 15 million over the next three years. The capital outlay levy will drop approximately 7 cents to $2.84, while the special education levy is increasing 20 cents. The impact of the FY18 budget on the homeowner's property tax rate is a drop in the projected levy from $8.44 to $8.14 for $1,000 of assessed valuation. The average school property tax increase over the last 17 years for a typical house in the Sioux Falls School District is approximately 0.8 percent per year. That's all of my prepared remarks. I will give you the recommendation after discussion, if you might. I guess I'll, having been on the Budget Committee and, you know, been involved in this for nearly nine or 10 years, I give you my view of this year's budget and what I think the board needs to be.
needs to be mindful of. But as I look at the budget this year, you know, we had a five-year plan last year, as we always do, and came into this year looking at the budget, and we were, what came out of here, where we had in our five-year plan a 3% increase, we ended up with a 0.3% increase. So that left us a $3.5 million hole in our budget essentially right off the bat. And then if you look at the fact that I've got a textbook adoption, which is probably a million and a half over what normalized would be, what I call normalized, we're... That's why we're spending $5.5 million into the fund balance. The good news is, at least for one year, is since, you know, in the last year or two, I've been, we've been very good stewards of our money, the district has. You know, we came into, we'll end our fund balance this year, this fiscal year, at about $3.7 million better than we thought we would in the last five-year plan. So that's good news. That's offsetting it. However, that's a one-year item. So as I look through it, I look, the $5.1 million that we're going to spend into the fund balance, and if I normalize that for the textbook addition, in other words, next year I wouldn't have that. However, I have to bring back in the $2.5 million worth of busing that I've been moving off to the capital outlay fund in the last few years. I'm left what I call is about a $6 million structural deficit that I have to figure out going forward when I look at the five-year plan, is how do I get back to break even, which is, I think, is something we as a board always want to strive to do, is, because we have future boards that have to live with the decisions that we make. And if you look out in a five-year plan, the way I do that eventually is through what I call efficiencies. So if you think about a, next year, I've got to come up with a million three in efficiencies, and then my, what we call the teacher delta, which is essentially younger teachers coming in and replacing teachers that are retiring, that's another 1.4 million. So next year, I've got to drive about $2.7 million in efficiencies, and then the year after that, another $2.5 million. So you can see by, basically by finding those types of things, I can, in a couple years, I can get $5 million and get back to close to break even. But it's all coming more or less on the expense side by continuing to look for efficiencies. However, when, you know, between busing and salaries, 90% of your budget is, you know, are those things, it's hard to keep finding that million dollars out of your other, the other type of, you know, expenditure lines. The biggest risk I see to the five-year plan is in the, is more on the revenue side, because, you know, the federal funding, we talked about Head Start earlier, you know, it's very unpredictable, looking at the new administration, it's hard for me to believe we're going to see an increase in federal funding. That's just my gut sense. I don't know how long it'll take, but I think that is going to come under pressure. It's just what my gut tells me. We look at the state funding, I've got a 3% increase, you know, baked into my five-year plan. I don't know if we'll see 3% again or not. I mean, it's just hard to say. We've gone, other than the bump that we saw, to try to move teacher pay from the extra sales tax that was put in, we just don't see that kind of revenue coming out of here anymore. It's sort of what's left over at the end of the day, at the end of the session, and sales taxes aren't going, looking very well, and the growth in the economy. So I wonder how good, you know, how solid the 3% is. And if I have another year like I do, like I did this last year, and I have another $3.5 million hole, it starts to really put my pressure on the five-year plan, which is already aggressive. And then we saw the benefit the last couple of years of an increase in state franchise tax, but that's another one that can jump all over the place. So I see revenue is very, you know, it's going to be tough going, I think, in the next five years to be, to keep it at the level that we want to. And I look and I say, well, are we good stewards of our money? And so I do, I do go out and look at how we rank compared to the other districts in the state, and I know that we are good stewards of our money. Out of 150 school districts, we rank 118, which means we're in the, you know, we're in the lower third on spending, which is a good place to be. And then you look at our demographics and things, and I think when you equalize all that, I think we're very good stewards of our money. If you look at class sizes, staff to student ratios, all those, that type of stuff, we're on the better end of that, as being good stewards of our money and looking for efficiencies. I look at things in the district that, you know, behavioral programs that we're having to deal with in our district, you know, I'm up to 133 FTE or full-time equivalents just dealing with behavioral issues across the district. My ELL population, you know, probably $2.5 million, roughly there, that I can't cover either through state funding, the extra state funding that we get, or the federal funding. So the five-year plan is very aggressive, and I would say then we have only one lever in the district to be able to have a contingency for us out there to cover things, you know, like another poor funding year out of here. And if I want to keep my teachers to where they're at, and if I want to fund and reward them for their education attainment and those types of things that we are used to doing, the only lever I have at my disposal as a district anymore that I can control is the opt-out. And so I look at, when Business Manager Veek said that our levy is going from, this is forecasted in the next budget year to go from $8.44 to $8.14, and knowing where our budget is ending up, I have to say, does that make sense to do that? That 30 cents, it's about a million dollars every six... It costs about 6 cents in levy equivalent to fund about a million dollars in opt-out. So if I was to take that 30 cents and keep that levy per homeowner flat, I could increase that, my opt-out, by $5 million. Or, in other ways saying it, I could at least increase the ceiling on my opt-out. Whether I use it, hopefully, we won't need to use it. Hopefully, revenue will come in, I'll hit all my efficiency targets, and I won't need to use any more than a $7.5 million opt-out. But if any of those things, the revenue becomes soft, or I can't hit those efficiency targets in the district that are already aggressive, if I want to move my graduation rate, I want to keep the same level of education that I have today, I feel like moving the opt-out ability to move the opt-out from, at least by another $5 million, and moving it maybe from $7.5 to $12.5 or something around that, might be prudent for this board to consider to give future boards a mechanism to be able to deal with any of those changes that we might see down the road. And so I know we talked about, so that's kind of, as I look at it from a board perspective, and having, you know, probably a decade of these budgets behind me, it's one that I haven't seen, the five-year plan, you know, go this low into the fund balance, nor are we going into a, I mean, we saw how devastating it was when we took a backwards move out of here, right? But I had a mechanism to increase my opt-out at that time if I so choose, because I have that capacity. Right now, I'm, our opt-out is $7.5 million, and I have no capacity to go beyond that. So I think as a board, it may be prudent to be able to create a buffer or contingency plan to allow me to do that if I need to. And so...
With the tax relief, the mill levy won't increase?
Yeah, right now, it's forecasted to go down 30 cents per $1,000 if I adopt this budget. So, and it's not to say I would ever use it, but it would to say it may be prudent to consider that as a board, just because of some of the things we're seeing in the district, and some of the challenges, and some of the, just the softness in the funding that we've been seeing, and knowing what's to come, possibly at a federal level, state level, continued softness in revenue, and those things are concerning. Because if, you know, the $3 million hit I took this year, getting 0.3 versus 3%, that's every year, right? That's a hole that I have to deal with every year. So over five years, that's $15 million I got to cover. It's not just a one-year thing. So that's kind of my view, something we as a board may want to consider looking into, just to make sure that I said that, again, that we give future boards the capacity to deal with some of these things that may come our way, that we can't quantify now, unfortunately, because we usually get them, you know, they just come upon us, nothing we can predict. We don't have a crystal ball, and, but I think having an ability to control some of that would be a good thing, I think, for this board to consider.
Any discussion?
Well, I think one of the things we talked about at that, one of the things we talked about at our work session was reconvening the Finance Action Network. And I think that would be prudent to do that now and take a hard look at this.
Yeah, and for those who aren't aware, the Finance Action Network was basically a group of community finance CFO-type people that would come in and essentially look at our five-year projection to give us feedback. I think one thing we are pride ourselves in this district is transparency. So there's nothing we're not afraid to show anybody from a financial perspective, and I think having those people at the table with us, I think, would help us to say, well, you know, they may say it's not 5 million, you should have a $10 million increase, or the capacity to do that, I don't know. But I find great comfort probably in having a group of people, high-caliber people like that, sit around and work with Business Manager Veek and Superintendent Maher to give us, and the board, a little direction, or, and are we seeing things correctly? And I think it helps the community, too, to make sure that, you know, we're fully transparent, and, you know, it's just the nature of what we're seeing with from a funding perspective these days.
Well, now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed FY18 budget. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to give testimony or comments or to ask questions, now would be that time. Please just step forward, give us your name and address and your comment or question. Saying no one, the public hearing has concluded. May I have a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and tentatively approve the FY18 school district budget to allow Human Resources to offer employee contracts, with the understanding that the budget will be brought forward for adoption and certification of levies at the annual meeting held July 10, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We had the Policy Committee review last Tuesday. The first one that I will bring forward is JCA, JCR. This is the assignment of students to school, open enrollment, and non-resident students. As always, in an effort to keep the school board policies updated, members of the administration and Policy Review Committee will continually review policies and regulations for items that need to be added, deleted, revised, or in some cases, simply update the language. This policy has been reviewed by the administration and by the Review Committee, and given the minimal revisions to this policy, a second reading is not necessary. May I please have a motion to review or revise policy JCA, JCR?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Now, the first reading of policy AH. Thank you so much, Kate, for explaining this for us.
Happy to help explain policy AH. So this legislative session, the law governing contractual conflicts of interest had significant updates, so that also requires significant updates to our policy. The essential intent remains the same, and that is that certain employees and the board members can't have a contractual conflict of interest with the district unless they disclose that interest, and in some cases, the board grant approval for that conflict. Summarizing the main changes to the policy, the disclosure requirement will apply, will continue to apply to board members and administrators, but now it will also apply to any other employee who has the spending authority of $5,000 or more a year. We're still trying to analyze that impact and if we need to change any other policies based on that piece of it. The contracts that require disclosure, it used to be any amount of, or a contract of any amount, now that is also limited to $5,000 or more, so that limits the contracts that require disclosure. And that $5,000 can be in a single contract or a multiple contracts with the same party over a 12-month period. There are now two distinct types of disclosure. The first is when a person receives a direct benefit from a contract, and the law and our policy explains for instances when that would be the case. The other type of disclosure is when the person just has an interest in a conflict, and there's two causes for that type of disclosure. The policy provides then further guidance on when neither of those options, you'd have to, it clarifies instances when you wouldn't have to disclose under either of those types of disclosures. And with the distinction and clarification in what a direct benefit is and what an interest in a contract is, the process for disclosing those contracts and receiving approval has also been updated. The direct benefits would require both a disclosure to the board and the board's approval. The board would have to act to determine if that person can continue with that contract based on whether the terms of that contract are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest. Those forms and decisions would then be forwarded on to both the Auditor General and the Attorney General. When it's the interest in a contract disclosure, those disclosure forms are part of the minutes, but do not require board approval, and they don't go beyond the district. In both types of disclosures, the disclosures are public records, and ongoing conflicts have to be redisclosed at the annual meeting at July. However, no further board action is required on those ongoing contracts. And the law would also require us to make our forms available along with the policy, so those, when they're updated for the new school year, will be available next to the policy on the website and also through the Business Manager's office. Any question on this?
Thank you. Any questions or clarifications?
There's a lot of red.
Here's mine.
Yep.
I am so grateful that you came and helped explain that. It is complicated, and I appreciate it.
Well, I thank you for working closely with the legislators to get the language cleaned up a little bit. It's not perfect, but hopefully it makes a little bit more sense.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm looking for a motion to acknowledge the first reading of policy
I'm looking for a motion to acknowledge the first reading of policy AH with the understanding it will turn for a second reading May 8, 2017, and will be on the website for 30 days for comments or suggestions.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just clarify that I will be voting nay on this, and it simply is a principle. I don't think that anybody on the board has misunderstood how I feel about this, about the law and about the policy. I, I don't have a problem with us disclosing conflicts. I feel strongly that the legislature has set themselves apart by not including themselves in this, in this state law, and I, I have a deeply held conviction that we should all be treated the same in South Dakota or anywhere else. And so just as a preface, I will be, I will be voting nay on this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I have a motion in a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
The motion carries. Anything further? You have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion, or, meeting adjourned. Motion.